We'd like to call the I S C seven on one, school board meeting to order in January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three at four thirty P M. Central Standard Time is the regular board meeting. We'd like to welcome everyone here. Then we'll move to item two, pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you wish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, a fair, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to item three, motion to approve the agenda.
Awaful.
Chair will support. Move by Director Volter, supported by Director Berklich. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. With that, we'll move to item four, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Awaful.
Why Director Volter, supported by Director Nyberg. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. With that, move to item five, public comment.
And we've done a seat check.
There isn't any. So with that, we'll move to item six. Mr. Matt Berg presents band trip to Disney World.
Yeah, Mr. Berg is here to talk about his trip that he's hopefully planning for next, the end of next school year, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Would you mind standing at the podium, Mr. Berg?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Crank of angle at the TV camera if you will.
So, um, yeah, my name is Matt Berg. I'm the band director here at the high school. I teach eighth through twelfth grade band. Um, and thank you for having me on the meeting today. Um, I'm here to talk about our band trip for next year. Uh, we are planning on going to Disney World. Uh, this would be in spring of next year. Uh, exact dates are March, Sunday, March twenty-fourth through Saturday, March thirtieth. Uh, so this is a seven-day trip, um, and it is over our spring break. Uh, well, partially over our spring break, the, before we get back the Saturday, uh, before Easter. Um, so on this trip, we would, um, we have a lot of really exciting stuff planned. Um, go into all the major Disney, um, the Disney parks, plus one day at Orlando, as well as going to the Kennedy Space Center, um, and Cocoa Beach, um, and a lot of fun stuff like that that the kids are really gonna enjoy. Um, as well as that, uh, for, on the musical side of things, we have performances planned, um, at, uh, the Disney Parks. Um, unsure this time which park we're gonna be performing at, um, but we will be performing there, as well as getting workshops with the Disney's Imagination Workshop, which is catered to, um, bands like, like ours. They're, um, very used to working with this kind of stuff. So they have a really, really good program, um, designed to work on that. So a lot of, uh, musical stuff, as well as mostly just having a lot of fun. Um, and it's very important that they get to kind of connect these musical experiences with, um, the fun experiences. A lot of these, um, students, when I told them about this, a lot of them had never been to Disney World, um, or some of them never even been out of the state. So they're really thrilled to kind of experience that. And I think it's really cool they get to experience that through music on top of that. Um, so at this time, I mean, we don't have a, um, every single thing booked. It's a little too early to get all that kind of stuff. So it's just kind of a rough idea of all the stuff we'll, uh, we'll be doing. We're working through J V Travel, um, in Virginia. Uh, it's a travel agency. Um, we've had a long relationship with them in the past. Um, they're great to work with. They do these Disney trips with bands all the time, very familiar with it. Um, they do a lot of the other bands, um, on the Iron Range as well. They work through that. So, um, the itinerary we have now is through them. It's been, they're very good about this stuff. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm sure it'll let the board know if you need any chaparos. Have a good time.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a question. Do you have like a ballpark cost estimate yet for participants? And will students have an opportunity to start fundraising now?
So, um, my ballpark guess is gonna be between eighteen hundred and two thousand per student. Um, Disney World is not one of our cheaper options we could have done. Um, however, I felt that it was the right thing to do, given we haven't been on a trip, I think, twenty eighteen, I think would be the last time we were on a trip. Um, and so I think we kind of needed to go big and really give the students something really, really cool. Um, so about eighteen hundred to two thousand per student is what I'm guessing. Uh, fundraising, we'll start with our next fundraiser, which I believe is in, uh, February. I believe our next fundraiser is the Butterbraids, which starts next month. They'll have about five, two, one, two, three. Yes, they'll have five fundraising opportunities between now and then. Um, students can raise, I, I've seen students raise a thousand dollars in one fundraiser before. So they should be able to get the money, uh, for this if they, if they work for it.
How many band members are there?
Um, in our concert band, which is the group that would be going next year. So that's gonna be our tenth through twelfth graders next year. This year's ninth through eleventh graders. Um, this year in concert band, we have fifty-two members of that concert band. Next year, there's really, it, it should be about the same. There's, there's no way of saying who's gonna drop, who's gonna join. We always have, people go both ways. Um, so I would probably say it'll, it'll be about the same. The current graduating class is about the same as the ninth grade class. Um, so I don't expect it to really be any different. So I'd probably save on, around fifty kids, um, in the concert band. We hope that all the students will go, um, on the trip. One thing that's kind of tricky with band is that it's all about instrumentation. If we're, some instruments are a little bit easier to work with. You know, when I got eight trumpets, if one trumpet can't go, it's not the end of the world. But when I've got two tubas and one of them can't go on the trip, that can make a pretty big impact on the way the band sounds. Um, some instruments only have one person, our, you know, bass, clarinet, bassoon, oboe, uh, those will never have more than one person on it. So when we're missing that one person, it's kind of tricky. Um, so we try to get all the students to go. Uh, if even with the fundraising, that becomes a financial barrier for students, uh, our band, um, boosters organization will kick in and help that student out on a need-by-need basis.
So is marching band completely separate, or does it overlap kids?
So, yeah, marching band is a separate entity, um, that goes on in the summer. This would be a concert band trip. Um, so this is just kind of what we do during the school year, um, when we put our concerts on in the evening.
Yeah.
Um, so this trip is for them.
Right. So the marching band students, a lot of them are in concert band, though?
Yep, you have to be in concert band to be in marching band, so.
You have to be in concert band to be in marching, okay.
Yep. So all of our band students are in concert band. That's kind of, concert band is our kind of main.
Yeah.
Um, kind of the, the center of the wheel.
Yep.
Of our band program.
Awesome.
And then, yeah, you can be in marching band beyond that as well, yeah.
I'm assuming March, what did we say, twenty-fourth through thirtieth is after most of the state tournaments? So we won't be losing pieces of our band to state tournaments?
Yeah, it worked out very nicely, um, that we're going over spring break. So we'll have those days off. And it's the week after the last tournament, the last basketball, I believe it is. So it will not affect our F-band schedule, or students in those sports will not miss. Worked out very nicely.
We're, we're, so glad you're doing this. Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah. We'd like to keep us posted if any of you think, so.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Berg, with the, with the board's permission, I'll add the, the official approval to the next agenda, the February eighth agenda, if the board is to move that forward to, to vote on it officially, as likely typically do. So if you've got any other information between now and then, other than the itinerary that you put there, just share with me and then I'll use that for the backup in our packet for the board, too.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Berg. Yeah, and next, uh, Mr. Chair, if I may, we have Ms., uh, Ms. Sikora and Mr. Alex Coker.
Yes.
Am I saying that correctly?
Yes, you said it correctly.
It's Mr. Alex Coker with World Classrooms. They're here to present about a seventh and eighth grade trip to Washington, D.C.
First and foremost, thank you for letting me come speak today. Uh, you have this in front of you. A lot of the information that I'll go over is in this packet. Um, a lot of the questions you'll have is answered in this packet, but I'll kind of brief you through it. Uh, first, I want to tell you a little bit about myself, so you know who's standing here. I was actually a teacher the last two years in Minneapolis. Uh, I taught fifth grade, uh, and I was looking for a fun summer job. Uh, I came across World Classrooms and worked for them two summers ago, and I actually did eleven of their D.C. tours. And as a kid, I never had an opportunity to do anything like this because I was from a small farm town in Iowa. Um, World Classrooms was started in South Dakota, and we started with taking small schools out to Washington, D.C. Now, fast forward ten years, we've gotten in over a thousand schools, and it's because we've worked with so many small schools that we have a small-town feel to our company, and people love that. Um, that being said, uh, we'll go right into, uh, the itinerary. So if you open two-page, I think it'd be three of your packet, that is our full itinerary. So what we do is we would actually come here in a tour bus. We would, uh, pick up all the students and staff and family members if they choose to go. Uh, mom, dad, grandpa, they're invited. If they want to enroll, they can. Uh, there was one school in, in North Dakota that had three generations go to Washington, D.C. One was a war veteran. Very cool to experience that, um, as a family. That being said, once we get here at the tour bus, we'll pick everybody up, get down to M S P, um, and we have two of our staff, uh, per bus. Uh, and I say per bus because if you have a hun, or a hundred kids go, or a hundred community members go, that's two buses. So if you have two buses, that's four of us that go along the trip with you. Um, what we do is everything, logistical, uh, food, roll call, night security at the hotels. Uh, we take care of everything and anything that you can think of on tour, which is really nice for the teacher or principal that chooses to go along. Um, they get to sit back and really see the students in a different light. And I can say from personal experience, being a teacher, um, having my master's in education, learning about D.C. in D.C. is uncomparable. Um, I had never been out until two summers ago, and I think I learned more in eleven tours than I did my entire history career, um, through college and high school. So it's pretty cool to experience it with a bunch of middle school kids that have never flown before. Uh, but once we get through TSA, uh, we actually have strategic speeches for certain parts of the tour. For example, right off the bat, when we get to, uh, the airport, uh, we, we have to make sure the kids know that their bags could get searched. A lot of TSA agents aren't super happy to see a hundred kids that have never flown before. We're really excited to see them, but they're not excited to see us. So you gotta make sure that kids are ready to get through TSA. Um, and once we get them through TSA, uh, we hit the ground running, uh, that day, and then this itinerary starts. Uh, you can see it. I'm not, I won't go through everything, um, myself, but I will share one story at Arlington National Cemetery. I think that's a very stable spot for me, a very eye-opening spot to see what our, um, veterans have sacrificed for us to do what we do every day. And I really think it's important to show the youth, um, what the United States is about. And, uh, a lot of these things, our tour guides are included in that. So not only do you get two of us as staff members that go on the trip, um, that do roll call and all of that jazz, you have two professional tour guides that are taking around, taking you around D.C. and educating the kids on every single stop and every single monument and every single historical moment that has happened in D.C. Um, so after the itinerary, obviously, the, the school's liability, they take no liability. It's really important. We take all liability. Nothing has ever happened on a tour, but it's in there for, for legal purposes. And then finally, the last, um, page, just for reference of the schools that we do travel with, and this is by far not a master list, but this is a, a list of schools that you would know, especially in the state. Um, at that point, uh, I would love to open it up for questions and address any concerns.
Do you need a minimum number of students to, to make the trip?
No, we do not. Uh, we travel with enough schools in Minnesota alone that what we would do, if there was a small group, which I don't anticipate there will be, um, we would just partner you with a neighboring school.
Okay.
Which is actually a really fun trip because they get to meet other students from other areas.
Okay. So how many, you always take a hundred?
No, not always. No, I would say on average, it's around thirty to forty per school, depending on school size.
Per school, okay.
Yep.
And you do take each school separate, unless it's really small?
Yeah, unless it's a small enrollment. And then we'll, we'll pod you up because we want to make sure we get as many students out in D.C.
Okay. So I was reading in here, this, this is not a school-sponsored activity?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. Well, I, I personally am just excited to take a seventh or eighth grader, and like you said, so many that have never flown, have never left the state, and just to tee them up for their, for their future civics and history courses, I think that's an awesome opportunity.
Yeah. We, we really found our niche with the middle school group. Um, it's, it's really woven into the state standards, and we could get into that. But it's really quite interesting and eye-opening for the students to be able to learn it and then to see it in the same year. So a lot of the stuff they see and learn in school is what they'll see in D.C. So the connections outside of school are great, but even in school are amazing as well.
So I have just another question. Cost to a student?
Twenty-three ninety-five is the cost for the student and any, any member that would choose to go.
So how does this work in other districts? If this is not a school-sponsored event, I mean, I would want to make sure that enough of our students that would want to go would have opportunity to go, but for all families, twenty-three ninety-five is respending. So how can this meld with, with fundraising?
So our approach to fundraising is we don't require any fundraising, um, which a lot of schools we do work with do it on their own. Um, I have, I have worked with schools that have raised money for, to sponsor one or two kids, and they offer an incentive program, whether that's most improved student, uh, best behaved student, whatever the case may be. Um, we offer a letter that would actually go home, uh, to the kids, and basically, it's a, it's a template that they can send out to family members to help them fundraise money. Um, it's a, it's not necessarily a fundraiser, but it's a tool that they can use to help fundraise the money to go to D.C.
When Alex came to, when Alex came to present, we put it out to all the teachers and staff to see who would be interested and who would want to help go on this trip and, and lead the charge. So Mr. Tyne, Mr. Christie, as social studies teachers, they have seventh and eighth graders and ninth graders, and so these kids would be going into the civics class where they're gonna be learning about government. They're all on board on, on going with. Sarah Oja, our counselor, wants to attend, and, um, Michelle Finfinger.
Oh, yeah.
One of our pairs. I, I think we have a lot of, we have a lot of adult interest, so we would make those connections, and then we could do the fundraising part. So kids who want to go have the opportunity to go.
My personal, I was, I was done with college. I was twenty-six years old, and I thought, boy, if I could have had an opportunity like this back then, it'd make a whole world of a difference. I've been out there several, excuse me, several times, and I still look forward if I can.
And what's also, we love this, too, that it doesn't interfere with the band trip, with the choir trip, with senior trips, because it's, we are taking the younger kids, and there's another opportunity for our, for our younger kids to have something to look forward to.
And just to speak on your point, John, um, we actually had a student that went on our middle school trip, and he is actually, we received a letter from him, I think it was three or four months ago. He's actually in Washington, D.C., and he's working for a senator right now. And he attributed his trip, I get goosebumps talking about, he, he attributed the, what he learned on our trip. It, it really opened his eyes to what professions or what he could do in life. And now he's working in D.C., and he wrote us a really cool letter, so.
Do we have dates?
Oh, yeah, we have dates.
They're actually on page two. I kind of skipped over that, but.
June eighteenth.
Yep, June eighteenth through the twenty-first. Um, the top left-hand corner of, I believe it's page two, kind of outlines the, the trip dates.
But it's next summer.
Yep.
So we have lots of time to, if, if this, if the board approves this, what we would do is we'd meet with the students next and have an assembly for all seventh and eighth graders. And then we'd meet with the parents on February thirteenth at seven o'clock in the auditorium, so they can ask all the questions, get the, um, all the information, um, and then, and then go from there.
What's your fee for this?
That's a great question. I would, I don't know. That's a great question. I could find out for you, though.
And then if you could find that out and then let us know if that is per person that goes, like you said, you know, based on how many students or people attend, you have more people, I think we would need to know that cost.
Okay.
And if it, if that's completely separate, or if that's tied in that all into this cost per person that goes.
Okay. Absolutely.
You mean, there might be an additional cost for, for what, other than the twenty-three ninety-five?
No, that is the cost.
So what?
I'm just saying, is his fee, or is there a fee tied into this already, or is there a fee completely separate that would have to be paid?
That is the price.
No, that's the price.
That's all in.
But for you and your staff to go and for to do this?
Oh, okay, yes. Okay, I see what you're saying.
You should, these like, you call them study abroad things, right? There's, there's a certain number of participants, and they're, a portion of the twenty-three ninety-five usually covers.
I don't know anything about that, but I can sure find out if you would like to know.
But for every fifteen students, we get a free chaparral.
Yep.
So Mr. Tyne can, doesn't have to pay twenty-three hundred dollars if he has fifteen students go.
I have a question on that. Do you have a reference to all these schools in the back?
Yes.
Is Hibbin the first range school? Because I don't see any other range schools.
Yes, it is. Yep. Masabi East, just north of here, is starting a trip. They have their parent meeting on Friday. Okay, thank you. Yep.
As a parent, I have a question. Like, I know when the, they did, when they did the German trip, they were like, this is the cost you can start paying right now per month.
Yes.
Is there an option to do that for parents?
Uh, yeah. So that's how we, that's how we pay anyway. Um, we do monthly installments up until their travel date. So as soon as that parent meeting happens and they enroll, they're paying monthly up until their travel date and till they go. Yep.
And how does that coordinate with the fundraising?
Comments, if you just, you would acknowledge it. Go ahead.
So how does that, if they're making monthly, they say, okay, I commit, my child's gonna go.
Yes.
Then they start making the monthly payments, and then the fundraising somehow is coordinated with that. I mean, they might not have to pay for the whole thing.
Yeah.
If there's fundraising.
I mean, if you add the fundraising in, yes.
Yeah.
But that's something we would have to figure out.
Yeah, we would have to do that.
But that's, you're not involved with that?
Nope.
Our school, or whatever, whoever, yeah.
Correct.
But I'm a little bit confused here, because you, we said it's not a school-sponsored event. So should we be even funneling any of the money through our school?
That's totally up, up to you guys. We don't require any fundraising. The main reason we don't, um, staple a school trip is normally we don't need to do a board meeting if it's that way, but we want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
What do you mean funneling? What do you mean funneling?
Well, I mean, should, as, if this is not a school-sponsored activity.
Sponsored, right. So it's not our liability.
It should be not, I mean, like, it's wonderful. I'm enthusiastic about it, but if we start getting too involved, then it becomes a, it becomes a school-sponsored.
This should be our last involvement, right? You're just presenting now, just a lot of snow.
Right. The money would go through our business office. It would go directly to your.
Correct.
To W C, yeah.
Yeah. After the parent meeting, the school is out of it. Everybody, the, the payments, the questions, everything comes to, through the company. Yep.
So nothing goes through Alex or anything, yeah?
Nope.
And being that it's not sponsored, we have no say. They can have it or they can't.
That's right.
We're just looking for the head nod and going, we like this.
Yeah. I like it. You got my eye.
I think this is, this is similar to our German instructor, that MF travel trip that he was talking about, where they were going to Europe. He was just more giving us a heads up that this is some, you know, and then we gave him permission that, yes, you know, you could use school email to.
Yeah.
Talk to parents and things like that.
Very similar.
It's more of a heads up, I think.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I think when parents know that it's something that's been vetted, I mean, at least we've asked questions, then they're gonna know that, um, I, I think they would feel better about it in encouraging a seventh and eighth grader to go.
We just wanted to make sure all the school board knew about it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Of course.
I'll just tell you, too, as a superintendent, I'm really excited that kids don't have to miss school to be a part of this.
I know.
Because they're missing the school where it is.
Yeah.
So thank you for that.
Kids, kids are very busy, and they keep getting busier as they get older, and, um, we don't want to interfere, especially in the smaller communities, when you have FFA and, and important, you know, programs that I was involved in. I, I get it. So we want to make sure that we don't interfere with any, anything in the school.
It's a nice age because they probably don't have a job either, yet, a summer job.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's a really ideal age.
It's a really fun opportunity for the families, too, because they get to go out until with their seventh and eighth grader, and once they hit a high school, they know they're sprinting through, and then they're in college. So it's kind of the last hurrah for the families in a sense.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Of course. Thank you.
Good luck.
Yeah, I see the point. Is it a barco?
Yeah.
I'd love to go.
I agree.
What? That's a good, that's a good price.
With that, we'll move to item A, personnel.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Item A is a motion to approve the hiring of Anna May Bills to job number sixty, pupil support assistant, thirty hours per week, early learning center, effective January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
So, support?
With Director Volter, support, excuse me, supported by Director McGlaughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item B is a motion to accept the resignation for purposes of retirement from Renee Wells, special education teacher, Lincoln Elementary, effective September eighth, twenty twenty-three.
So moves?
Support.
Move by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Volter. Any discussion?
We're in the process of looking for replacement.
We are. We, uh, Mr. Lutzka actually interviewed four candidates yesterday, I believe. Um, so we, we've always kind of had an open posting in, in special education for the last year and a half or so, I think. Um, so yes, we're constantly looking for, for people to fill those spots. But I think he's, I think they did yesterday, uh, interview, and he has a recommendation for a hire to fill one of those spots. We'll be coming to the next meeting.
Some big shoes to fill.
Absolutely. Yes, yep.
Director Nyberg?
Renee happens to be a friend of mine. I just want to thank her for her warm, caring, loving service to our special ed students over the years, and she will definitely be missed.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question, and I echo what Kathy says, and she's done an amazing job. But September eighth is a retirement date? That's like unusual or different than we've seen?
Well, so we, so this, I believe, is a rule of ninety retirement. So it's, it's effective on the date that you started, and then, you know, they count, you know, to get to those, to that rule of ninety. So what we would do in a situation like this is Ms. Wells would come back. She would, um, work as a mentor for the new instructor, help in the classroom, maybe attend her opening workshops, just, just be a helping hand through those first couple of days of school. And then we'd wish her well and, and, um, welcome her to her retirement.
And I think she's gonna substitute, so.
Yes.
Be the big plus.
Yes, absolutely.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. With that, we'll move item nine. Anything from the directors?
Yes, I left a flyer, um, at each of our places. The Boys and Girls Club is gonna host their brand opening on Tuesday, January thirty-first, at the Green Haven, starting at three-thirty. And so I was asked to make sure the school board directors knew about it and to invite them, and if we had to approve ourselves to be present at the event.
Once again, that's Green Haven Elementary School, door six, on January thirty-first, three-thirty to five-thirty, for the camera.
Do we have to approve?
Pardon?
Do we have to approve ourselves if we're quorum?
No. That's just for information purposes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Well, we, yeah. I thought we saw a further discussion. That was just a test, to make sure that people are paying attention, so. With that, student director, Aiden.
Hi. Long time no see.
Hi. How are you? I'm good. Cool late today, but.
That's okay.
Better late than never.
Yeah. Too bad I could be here today, after whole scandal of skiing and stuff that's going on. I don't really got much to say.
Pardon?
I don't really got much to say. School's going well. The school's going well. Um, only problem is with the whole. Um, only problem is with the whole putting classes, everybody are like overfilling some classes. I heard a lot of students complaining about it. But I don't, I don't, probably not much you can do there, but I want to let you guys know that with like certain like shop classes or gym classes, they're getting way overfilled. Like Mr. Howard, I think his third hour next semester has like thirty-three kids in there and he can only support like a certain hall to get, make sure they get what they need for that certain class. Um, and some other teachers are, their classes are filling up. And I just, that's just, I'm just hearing about their place a lot of how they want, like some kids want that class and they're getting voided out. It's too full and but, um, otherwise it's not be good. I've heard a lot, a lot of good things about like school activities and stuff. Um. I think it's this group a bit.
I think with the elective, you're talking about electives probably, like shop, or, you know.
He went shop, art, like shop eight, I think is a requirement.
Oh, shop eight, okay.
Is it a requirement, Mrs. Akbar?
Yeah, it's a requirement. And, and Aiden is exactly right. The classes were not balanced until, that's what counselors do in December and January because of the new enrollments and they have to go through if kids are, um, needing a different schedule change. So we have reduced all of the shop classes, like woods and welding, to eighteen because it's not safe to have more than eighteen students there. And so that's probably what Aiden is talking about. If kids are finding out that they cannot be in that class, it's because we don't have the capacity to have so many kids, it just becomes unsafe for that. Same with building construction. When the kids go out to the house to build that house, we can't have more than twelve because it's just, it's too dangerous to do that.
How do you decide which kids are removed and what?
The youngest, we go youngest first.
Based off of birthday?
So like ninth graders don't, wouldn't be able to be in the class because we want to make sure that the seniors and juniors that have requested those classes have first opportunity. So.
So are those kids that are out of the class then, or they just, where do they go?
They go to a, a different elective.
A different elective, okay.
So they might have to go to a gym class or they might have to fill in, in an, an art class or get their second or third choice of what they registered for.
Yeah, I always think it's unfortunate and I know, I know it's difficult for us as a district, but unfortunate if they're thrown into a study hall, you know, to do. Well, they may not do much or accomplish much versus being welding, you know what I mean? But I, I know that it's, it's a problem.
We have three shop teachers and all of them have overloads. So they're all at their capacity. They're teaching, like I said, an extra class. And even with that, we have kids that want to get into those classes. And that's the same with art. In fact, we get a big draw, lots of kids register and they don't always get to be in their first choice class.
Do you ever run into though that, that ninth grader even throughout going to, you know, tenth, eleventh, twelfth, doesn't get that class that they had wanted from the get-go?
I wouldn't know if that has happened or not. I haven't heard of that because seniors really, they get the first opportunity and then so all of those classes are full of seniors. So by the senior year, they should have those classes.
Even sometimes though, like us seniors, we, we still don't get the classes that we, that we want because there's just, it's just hard to fit everybody in what they want. Which makes sense because that's being coun, being coun, quite a really hard job. I, I wouldn't know because I'm that one, but.
What makes it really difficult is like, for instance, if you're a senior in band and then band will drive your whole schedule. Or if you're a senior in an upper level math class, it'll just, it'll drive everything. So, yeah, it is, but, but I think we've created some additional opportunities now with our seventh period day where kids had, you know, only six hours that they could fill. Now you can fill seven. Some are choosing a study hall. I get that. Some like a study hall. They do sports and activities and they like to be able to do some schoolwork, but I mean, if, some of those same kids we're talking about, I wonder if they take a study hall every year and then maybe they get to their senior year and it's like, oh geez, I can't take what I want. Well, it's like, you had many opportunities throughout to take classes too, but.
Yes, kids don't have to take a study hall.
Right.
That's, oh, I know.
Is there anything, and I know we put a plan together, right, but if we have that many students that are interested in career and technical programs or FACS, again, we might not have an answer today, but is there anything we can do? Is there any funding available to expand their capacity in those offerings? Because I just, you know, and I understand what you're saying, like, give the older students an opportunity to get in those classes first, but in the same token, if you have an eighth grader that that's sort of where they're tracking is more of a career, a, a career program and we start putting them in classes that they're really not interested in, are we gonna lose their interest? And then they're gonna kind of lose interest at school.
I'm sorry when I say we take the ninth graders out first. I'm not saying that ninth graders don't get the opportunity because at the, so if they want to take Woods one or welding one, most of the ninth graders do get those classes. It's the upper level classes.
But you know, and I, I think the issue is if we have so many kids looking for wood classes, okay, we have to take so many home. We, we should hire another teacher, right? But it's difficult to hire a part-time teacher. I think that's the issue. Can you hire someone that'll come and teach two hours a day? You know what I mean? Or three hours a day or even half a day. It's hard to find part-time teachers that are available to do it or interested in doing.
Yep, absolutely.
But it's too bad that we can't do that because that would be ideal.
Just to find a shop teacher in general is, you know, the stars have to align to get that, we're fortunate that we have three. And there's, there's many districts around us that can't fill these positions that they have. They're not offering the courses that we're offering and.
Could you bring in a, a person at a company who's not a teacher, who's an expert, expert welder, say, to come and teach one section of a class and get a, one of those exceptions for licensing or, you know?
You can't. There's, there's some bits that a person has to jump through. I mean, it has to be the right fit. It has to be, um, you know, sometimes in those situations, we haven't done that much here, but I, when I was in Chisholm, we were filling many of our classes with community experts, just because we couldn't find staff.
For maybe one year or one semester.
Like a woods class or, you know.
And so that works.
It, it does. It does to some extent if, if the person is willing to, to learn and take it seriously. But there's a lot of pedagogy and a lot of training that goes into working with children. Classes that you have to take, psych, psychology, behavior, things that you, you need to know. And sometimes the community experts that came in that I had, some of them really struggled.
With that part of it, yeah.
Kids. They just, they weren't used to, you know, maybe somebody's not saying yes when they ask them to do something or not following directions and they get frustrated. Or a teacher maybe has some additional training on, on how to get over those, those humps, but.
Then there's a question, do we have enough space?
Yeah.
And we've only got limited multiple classroom spaces for all our shop programs.
Yeah, true.
We, we, we do have the space because, you know, all of our shop, all of our teachers also, you know, teach multiple courses. So they're not just in the welding shop all day. So there are some open hours. There's some open hours in the wood shop. There's some open hours. And we do have some waiting lists for kids that want to take shop classes. And, you know, this, this is this whole, you know, it's a much bigger dilemma, right? We're, we're in this situation where we might have to cut a million dollars this year to, to break even, right? But then we're talking about these types of things, right? So I'm hopeful that the legislature and the governor are gonna come through with what they've been promising us. And if they do that, things might look a lot different here, um, come June, mid-June or so. And we might be able, even some of the cuts that we might have to make this spring, we might be able to add some of those pieces back depending on what happens with, with our funding, hopefully.
I just would like us to keep an open mind on hiring community experts.
Absolutely.
Especially if you've done it in our community or whatever.
Yep.
Because I think if, like you said, if you got the right person, that maybe would be okay at class management.
Yep.
And things like, and discipline.
Yep.
It would really be, it would be quite inexpensive. You wouldn't give them benefits, so.
Correct. And we do have, I mean, we've, you know, spent two years now, I think three years that we've, we've changed that overload language with the Hugh Group. That benefits situations like this, right? If, if Renee and the counselors see that there's a hundred kids that want to take, um, a woods three class and we've only got slots for seventy kids, right? They, they, if it fits in a teacher's schedule, they can assign an overload to meet that need. And we do that.
And that's good.
We do that depending on the situations.
That's good. How about art? How, is there a lot of kids waiting to get into art classes?
Like, I would say it, for art, FACS or, and the shop classes, those are big draws. They're very popular and they are teaching overloads because that, we want to meet the needs of the kids and try and get as many kids that want those classes as possible.
Yeah, because I would think with art, you know, there's artists around that would be willing to teach one class.
Another thing to add on that, I think, isn't the career academies tenth through twelfth?
It's ninth through twelfth.
It is ninth? Okay. Yeah. Cause I just heard, uh, a bunch of ninth graders that they weren't able to get into the career academy. I don't know if there's a certain amount of slot.
No, everyone can sign. We, our goal is to have every single kid in the school sign up for some kind of career pathway. So they can be college-bound and have a career path, um, or just have a career path, whatever. That would be, that would be ideal.
I just feel like the kids that like want to do the woods, like want to be carpenter or something, I just feel like, like, not like be mean or anything, but like, I think Mr. Brown needs to push a little bit harder to get like those certain companies that actually do that type of stuff in Hibbin to like allow the kids to go in there.
Well, and there's, there's some rules too, like, some of the industry partners that we work with, they, they have rules, their own safety rules that you can't be, um, younger than the age of eighteen, for example. That's a, that's a big one for some places.
Oh, so you're saying that maybe you've talked to eighth graders, did you say eighth graders or ninth?
Ninth graders.
Ninth. Okay, so that person is saying to you, I can't get into the career academies. They mean I can't get out to a company to do something?
Yeah.
That's what they mean?
Right, because the, the work, you're probably talking about work-based learning and that is for the older students.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't leave school to do the, the work-based learning until you are eleventh or twelfth grade. Some ten.
I think the minimum age is sixteen.
Yeah.
Sixteen, yeah.
Okay, so that's what you're talking about.
You get through your, kind of some foundation courses first. Like the work, everyone has to take a work seminar course, which we teach in the ninth grade. It's a careers and college class. That's our work seminar.
But that's difficult. It is difficult for some kids because I know I did that. And then I went into the career academy for a little bit and it's a really difficult course to get all the safety stuff done, all legal stuff.
That's a requirement. So that's something we can't get around.
And Aiden, I think when you did it, it was more like you were kind of doing it on your own with Mr. Brown's help. Now, Mr. Olson, the social studies teacher, is walking kids through that program. So it's getting done in civics class, which is new. That's two, second year, I think, we've done that or?
Yes, and it's for ninth grade. So we get, the, the ninth graders do that class so that they're prepared when they get older. So they already have it so they can do the work-based learning if they wish.
When I did that online course with the career academy with Mr. Brown.
You were one of the first, you were the first.
It was super difficult because it was like, I'm doing it by myself. I'd go and ask Mr. Brown. He'd be like, oh, you have to do that yourself. I can't. But he'd help you with that. And it's a good thing that Mr. Olson is doing it too.
Yes.
Because it is very difficult. Like for me, when I did it, I think I was like first or second year that it was ever done.
You were the first to get it done. And so that's why it's, we're making it better now.
So it's not online. Don't, don't want that.
There's still, there's still online modules, but it's taught in Mr. Olson's class. So he can help the kids through. It's, it's paced better. When Aiden had to go through it, it was like during the summer or you had to do it on your own.
And there's a certain timing you had to study and
Yeah.
because it, like, you couldn't move on to the other section unless you would spend like at least an hour on that certain module.
That's pretty tough for a ninth grader.
It was, yeah, it was really hard. Even when, I think I was what, tenth grade, I think. Tenth, eleventh grade. It was still difficult for me.
I was just gonna make a quick point. First of all, I want to thank Aves for giving us the student perspective. We don't really usually get that.
I know, I love it.
So thank you. And then to follow up with Mr. Akbar, uh, the career academy as a, as a business, you're only allowed so many kids on that program and your insurance only covers so much. So you have to be eighteen to take the class, to get involved with the career academy, to move on, to actually go to work. Uh, let's say at Ellen M. where one of the other manufacturers that are tough.
Yeah, it depends on, on which placement you have. So some can be sixteen, but.
Right, most are eighteen.
Miss Regan's, right.
Okay, good discussion. Any principals or assistants?
Yeah, I can, I can continue on with, so Aiden, that was a great segue. Work-based learning, we have an opportunity to expand. So right now, it's Mr. Olson and Mr. Brown have the work-based learning endorsements as well as Lenora Jensen. So she works with some of our high-needs special education students to get them placed in jobs. So Perkins is going to pay for an additional three teachers to get endorsed. So Ms. Bergerson, who has the ALP, so this will be another option for our, uh, alternative learning students. They'll get credit and they can, um, go to work through her. Sarah Hout Cooper is going to get a work-based learning license. So she will be diversified. She can place general ed and special ed students. And who is my third one? Jamie Tremberg. So she's already, this is perfect because she's already a CTE teacher. She's working in the education pathway and hopefully we'll have a culinary arts pathway because of all our foods classes. So she can place kids in those, in those, um, career paths.
Who was the first one you saw?
Dawn Bergerson. She's our ALP director and she's a special ed teacher.
Just to add on, Mrs. Tremberg, she does a phenomenal job with the peer mentoring.
Yes.
I, I'm, I'm in that and I love it. I love the whole, the first six weeks are kind of difficult because it's all about the education. But I think it's a really good program because I, I personally love it because I'm in that program.
That's why I'm glad you're here, Aiden, to speak to that because that's what she's doing. She is placing students in the peer mentoring. They get, um, intro to education kind of classes and then they're placed in the elementary, Lincoln, and even some of our classes. So we have some science teachers that are taking on, some of our high school students that have been through the science, um, to be, you know, like teacher assistants and things, so.
Like even for me, like I want to go into elementary teaching because that's what I'm going to, I task college for. So it gives me a great idea of like, because I'm placing kindergarten right now in New Washington. It just gives me a, like a perspective on like how the classrooms go open. And I think it's really great for like kids who want to go into education. So that's why I just love that program.
It's wonderful. And that's what we're constantly expanding. So when we talk about career academies, this, these, um, additional work-based learning instructors will expand. So that's gonna be, it's gonna be really good.
What do they have to do to get that? Is it a certification, a certificate or a license or what is that?
For work-based learning?
Yeah.
It's a license. So they have to take coursework. They have in-person. So on March seventh and eighth, they have all-day training and then they'll have to do a lot of work, like portfolio work on their own.
On their own, okay.
But they'll.
So it's through a college?
Yes, through Minnesota North. No.
Home Minnesota North, yeah.
Yeah, on the HCC campus.
Nice. So it's not the CTE, career tech education.
They already, yeah, right.
License.
Nope, it's work-based learning.
This is another license.
So that they can, they have the endorsement to place kids in jobs. Because right now, we have work release where kids can go, be released from school to go to work. This is much more intensive. And like Aiden had to go through that work seminar. All the kids have to do that before they get to us.
Well, that's fantastic. So Mr. Brown, right now, has the workplace learning and who else?
Yes, so he, he got his first in that. So Aiden was the first in that. Then Ryan Olson was trained. So he's doing the work seminar in his ninth grade class as a social studies teacher. Lenora Jensen has hers for special ed, but we're gonna get three more.
That's great.
Yes.
Because then they themselves can contact a company.
Right.
And make the arrangements. Great.
So and Aiden also said the end of the quarter is this Friday and, um, Sue Nelson is retiring. So I want to wish her the best of luck in her retirement. Her last day is on, on Friday. We had a fun night for some at eighth and ninth grade. Um, we're really trying to do more things to have the school open and, and get kids here. So we had about two hundred kids, seventh, eighth and ninth grade, come on January sixth, Friday night. We opened up the pool, the spin finger.
Sold all the food. It was great.
She didn't, she didn't, it was her anniversary, her and her husband, but they came and sold concessions and chaperone. Um, so we had a pool party with, uh, three lifeguards and our lifeguards are all students here. So that's another awesome thing that we have. Our students are lifeguards. They're going to the elementary buildings to lifeguard for Benziano's fifth and sixth grade, um, swimming classes. And also when Woolwich does seventh and eighth, there's a swimming portion. So they, they don't take study hall or they leave their study hall and go get paid to lifeguard. So we had three lifeguards. We had open gym and we had games in the mezzanine. So it was a, it was a really fun night. And they. And they all wanna do that again, so maybe we'll, maybe we'll have a dodgeball tournament in the wrestling room or something coming up.
Is that separate from what Dana DeCenzo does? Dana Lindstrip does with the Friday night things?
Yes, it's separate.
This is separate?
This is separate, but she also came to chaperone that too.
Okay.
So she's having a, a Blue Jacket Cafe uh this Friday for nine through twelfth graders in the cafeteria. So she kinda alternates, she does nine through twelve and seven through ninth, and then we're trying to do some more things too.
Was the pool party in gym, was that all free?
It was five dollars, and um we are using that money for incentives or projects, or we're doing, we're trying to do more awards. So um for seventh, eighth, and ninth grade, they get perfect attendance, we're buying them some gift cards and, and that kinda stuff, so it's. Or if a teacher comes to me and says, a student doesn't have enough money for their sewing project, I can take from that fund, from our, from our fun nights. So.
That's a great idea, I like that idea.
Yeah, so we're.
The whole getting the students together instead of like. Where they don't have some stuff to do on Friday nights, like if they're not in the sport and they're just sitting at home alone, I think that's a really good idea, to get them all together and having fun.
Right, and then it's, it, it makes the school come alive in a really friendly, fun atmosphere, they're all laughing and not worried about homework or losing things. Conferences are gonna be a little different this spring, so this is big news, we've had, we implemented department chairs, which you all approved. That earlier this year, so we've had, we've had several department chair meetings, yesterday, we met at six forty-five in the morning. And the teachers said that since spring conferences are not highly attended, what they would like to do is have. Um, on the first night, February twenty-eighth, a curriculum showcase, so it's right after registration, so kids are be, gonna be registering. We'll set up tables on this hallway, and then downstairs in front of the, the fax room, and the industrial tech, and the art room. And they'll pull out the big banner printer that makes these designs, so parents can come in, meet the entire department. Talk about, okay, what, what is my child gonna do in Woods Three, or social studies class, or whatever. If they wanted to, or someone from the department can bring them to the, the music room, or go see the pool and that kind of stuff too, so. That is gonna be part of spring conferences.
What date is that?
That will be March twenty-eighth from three to four thirty. And, I mean, February. February, February twenty-eighth is the first night of conferences for the high school, and it's from three to four thirty. And then four thirty to six, they'll break out into their regular conferences, so parents can do a Google Meet, or they can go in face-to-face. With the, with the teachers, then the second day of conferences is March eighth. And immediately following conferences on March eighth, we're gonna put on a family and parent event in the auditorium about the dangers of social media. And they're gonna talk about um sexting, and people who scam, you know, your social media, or um future employers. Who can, can look and find, you know, your social media, and making sure that you're being appropriate online from the time that you're, you're young. And then the next day, they'll come in for three presentations in the auditorium, one geared towards elementary, one geared towards middle school, and one to high school. So that's coming up in March as well.
And that's gonna be the same setup, March eighth, where three to four thirty, it's the social media stuff for parents, or what, what did you say? And then regular conferences, or no regular conferences, three, eight, nine?
On March eighth, it'll be regular conferences from three to six.
Oh, okay.
And then right after conferences.
Okay.
Parents can stay for the assembly to learn about the dangers of social media.
Yep.
Registration is coming up in February, we're already getting all those course menus together. Ms. Minnesota is coming to visit our school on February twenty-fourth, and she's the first Indigenous um Ms. Minnesota winner. And so she's gonna come up and visit with our kids about diversity and inclusion. And Jacket Jamboree, I thought, Aiden, you, you had mentioned this, Jacket Jamboree is Jan- January thirtieth. The week of January thirtieth through February fourth. Do you know what the dress-up days are yet?
Yes, they're all on Paris Day.
Are they?
I think, yeah, I think they did go out.
Do you know what they are? What are they?
Jamid, lace orange day, wear pink day, and the last one, I can't remember, but I plan on dressing up.
I think it's, I think it's uh twin day, I think it was that one, for the last one.
Oh, spirit day, yeah, that was the last one, the last one.
Spirit, spirit day is one of those, is, is the one on Fri- that Fri- that Friday.
Okay, alright, but there is a twin day? Cuz I got matching outfits with the, the counselors.
Oh, jamid, jersey eighteen coat day, and orange day, and spirit day.
Okay.
Okay, that's wonderful. Um, those are about all the updates I have, um, so do you have any questions, or did I miss anything, Aiden? Michelle?
I just think it's wonderful opportunities for our young people, when I saw the open gym youth night on, on Facebook. And saw all the students, what an awesome opportunity. It's amazing, everything that you do and your staff, so thank you.
I completely agree, thank you so much.
I think there should be a social media one for the nine through twelve presentation.
Yeah, there will be.
There will be?
Yep, on March ninth. That's when they'll, they'll come in, and the elementary kids will come in, and then the middle school, and then sometime during the day, we'll have nine through twelfth graders, or ten through twelve.
Cuz there's a lot of that going around, so.
I know.
So I was just like.
So yes, that, that's one of the reasons, Aiden, that we're bringing them in, because it, it is an issue, and it's, it's good for all of us as a reminder.
Who does the presentation?
It's called Dynamic Influence, and if you get my, the HHS memos, when I put out like updates or, or notes. I, I sent a link, and so I sent that out on Monday. Are all of you getting, Sarah especially, are you getting my emails now that I think you have a?
I just got into my email today, so um yes, I didn't get through them all, but I saw that I was receiving yours.
Okay, excellent.
One tier that I have, and I, I guess, with everything that you've done with all the different activities we've had. One thing that bothers me, and I happened to catch a documentary last night, is the fentanyl. I don't think we do enough in this school to teach the students the real aspect of what, what is out there. I mean, it, it's, it's unbelievable, uh, this program last night had students that took a, what they thought was a Skittle. And turned out to be fentanyl laced, and it, it really screwed them up for a long time. Uh, I just wondered if there's a program or a, a group out there that we could contact and just do it in the auditorium. This is what they did on this program last night, and they showed an actual, and they let the student participate in how to resuscitate a friend if they're at a party. And they have something, you know, have, unfortunately happened to them, but I think the fear of, of, of fentanyl, and the fact that it looks like a Skittle. I, I'm not naive enough to not to think that we don't have it here, and have it, I know we do, I've seen it, and uh, is it in the school? I'm sure it is, but uh, do we talk about it? Not really, I think it's something that has to be addressed and talked about.
Really, I could kind of address that a little bit, because that's what I do, um, if anybody wants presentations, I can coordinate those for just about any. Company or agency, um, I also provide Narcan um to any agency or volunteer groups or schools. Um, I'm actually teaching, um, fortunately from Hill City, um, we still work here, Maggie, Maggie. Contact me last week, I'm actually presenting next Monday to Hill City staff. Teachers, teach them how to use Narcan, how to, how to identify an overdose, and how to respond, et cetera, and what to watch for with their kids. And I'm doing, I can do this on a regular basis, I'll do an observation offices at the end of the month, um, so. I've got access to tons and tons of resources, if you wanna full-blown presentation, I can pull up the calendar a couple of days.
That would be wonderful, because um, I mean, the good news is, when we've had the drug dogs here, the local drug dogs, they haven't found anything so far. So that's, except for a prescription medicine one day, but you're right, they're like, it's on their person, or they're, they're, they're.
And believe me, I haven't talked to Mr. Poulter, I didn't know you did this, so.
No, but I think, you know, this is one of the reasons why I'm so thankful that um you voted to approve the health credit that's gonna be required. And um, so that's going into the course catalog for next year, every single ninth grader will have to take health, I think we should get something going sooner than later. Um, with an assembly, or we're going, pushing into some classrooms and talking about that. Um, our staff really wants to have more CPR, seizure, choking kind of training, and so. Um, Mr. Turner is working on getting that lined up too.
What did you say, what, you know, when I first started working that field, what, eight years ago, I think it was? We had a group that went around to different schools, went from Ely to Virginia, we did Evlith, we did Hiving at the Lincoln, and we did it during the day for students, if I remember right. Um, at the high school, but then we did it in the evening for parents, they're the ones that really need to know all this stuff. Like enough parents live in a vacuum, sometimes they don't know what the heck's going on out there, because fentanyl, I can't tell you how many people I know that have died from fentanyl overdoses. We don't even call it overdose anymore, it's poison, because it's, it's a, it's a, it's a dangerous, dangerous substance. And there's a lot of myths and stories out there about it, that um we can dispel some of that, um, you can't overdose from touching fentanyl. You can't overdose if you walk past it on a table, there's all these things that people are terrified about, it is killing our young, our youth. Who was just a high school student in Southern Minnesota, I think, or Derek Dakota, that just died from fentanyl overdose. Um, it happens daily. When I gave a presentation up in Ely, um, it was a result of a student overdose, and in, in the hallway outside the principal's office. Just went down, and it was overdose, luckily they saved the kid.
I get, I like to be proactive.
Yes.
I think it's time to look at doing something before something happens, it always seems like. Things don't get done unless something happens, and I hate to see that happen here.
So is Nar- Narcan, is that what you said?
Yes.
Do we stock that here, in our nurse's office?
There's some issues with that, because the Minnesota uh school nurses association has been opposed to that, but that rule apparently has been changed now. What we're actually looking at doing is, where there's a um AED.
A what?
An AED, all schools have, we've got dozens of them, is actually putting a unit of that in um, actually AED class.
So then any teacher could get to it.
Yes.
And administer it.
Teach somebody how to use Narcan is literally a fifteen-minute presentation.
Yeah, right.
It's, they're just nasal injectors like you would use if you had sinus.
So our, so our, Mr. Poulter spoke at my regional superintendent's group back in December, I, is that December? And um we had thought at that time, that like before Christmas, that there was gonna be a policy that MSBA was gonna put out there. Working with the Department of Health, and working with the Nurses Association, we thought that we were gonna have fentanyl available probably by the first of the year. Or excuse me, I apologize, Narcan available for fentanyl overdoses. Yes. And um, they're still working out all the details on that, it's still coming, um, but our SROs carry Narcan.
Okay.
So all, both Officer Halverson and Officer Casey, they, they carry Narcan. Um, the, the other thing I was gonna say is that, um, Mr. Accor, I just sent you, I, I um attended a little training at MSBA. Related to this, I just sent you a bunch of resources from the US Department of Ed, videos, handouts, webinars. Check it out, about, for kids, for staff, for parents.
Into either like our first hour homeroom classes, so everybody gets it, or push into all of our gym class, someone, somehow, to get it out.
And I'm sure you've probably spoken to them before, but in various meetings over the last year or so. I know the hospital has been really um excited at the opportunity to partner with us and help get back into our schools and train. So whatever, you know, to supplement what Jeff can do, I think that would be good too, in terms of just community partnerships and relationships.
The point I was trying to make is that, until you actually see someone that had this happen to them, and you see the effects that it's had, you can handle it all the best that you want. Not to be a friend.
No, no, sure, sure.
But until you see it, you don't realize how bad this can actually be. And I, I just feel, and I feel strongly about it, I just think it's time we start looking at it, not only for the, the staff, but more importantly, for the students. That they get an idea, cuz you know, as a sixth or seventh or eighth grader, you don't know what a Skittle from, you know, from fentanyl. But you know, you, you gotta be aware of, you know, what the effects are, how you, how you get in, and if you're, if somebody's spreading this. I don't wanna see the word about on TV, but this crap around, we need to know and need to, you know, take care of it and address it.
The documentary you saw, do you have, can you send me that, or is it something appropriate for the staff to, if I sent that?
Yeah, it was just, it was on, I think it was on, I do watch PBS. I think it was on one of the, on one of the stations, and it was, you know, a late-night deal, it was, just got done with work, and it just happened to turn it on.
Okay.
And believe me, I sat there for an hour from, you know, three, four in the morning, wow, it, it really opened my eyes to how bad it is.
Is there anyone, Jeff, that you would know that has experienced a fentanyl overdose, that is out there speaking to students, or?
A couple dozen, probably.
That, that would really be powerful to have someone that's actually had it happen to them.
I would do a, just a selfish plug here for myself, because if people want Narcan, all they have to do is stop and see.
Yeah.
Um, I have office hours at Lakeview Behavioral Health and Hiving, twelve to four on Tuesdays. And Arrowhead Center in Virginia on Thursdays from twelve to four, or they can track me down on um. Jeff@ram.org, R eight eight M dot org.
And I think if we could have educational programs even geared towards younger children, I mean, obviously, the focus would have, it would have to be age-appropriate. But I think if we started, you know, in, in the Lincoln, I don't think we can start too early.
That's right.
Well, we have the DARE program, right, don't you? So we do have, we have the DARE program so that they, they do.
That's, that's been around for a while, cuz I did that.
I did that, it worked for me.
Yeah.
I don't know if the, if the board's aware, the, even if the community is aware, but I, I was made aware that it happened on a Sunday. Prior to Christmas, prior to Christmas break, there was a very large fentanyl bust that happened. If you walk out the anchor door and walk towards the memorial building, it was in, in the houses between the uh school and the memorial building. They, they busted this fellow on a Sunday morning, which I was grateful for, you know, like, that didn't happen on a school day, and all these cars rolling in. But I mean, that's just, kids are walking past that every day.
That's probably why he lives there.
Maybe, I don't know, it's, he, they, he's arrested now, but I mean, it's, it's right here, it's right in our backyard, so.
I think that DARE program didn't do enough.
It didn't do enough for you?
Cuz like, in sixth grade, it was kinda all fun, like you would get like stickers and pencils and. Like erasers or whatever about it, but like, I didn't, I don't think, I think now, they should have like a deeper Intuit program. Then, or like, even if, like, the DARE program was like more serious, and it went deeper into the subject than what sixth grade happened. Cuz I feel like in sixth grade, it was just all like, it was serious, but like not at the same time.
And then how was seventh grade health for you, like, did you cover vaping and?
No.
Really, cuz I know Mr. Please does that now, he covers, you know, the effects of vaping and drugs and.
Yeah, now, but back when I did it, it was just like mental health and like. Body changes and stuff like that, it wasn't anything about drugs or vaping, or what tobacco does to you. We, we didn't cover that at all.
And, and I think that's important to hear from you, and I think that would be important for you to check our curriculum then.
Well, I know that he does it now, cuz I'm in his classroom, but I wasn't here when Aiden was in seventh.
Is he the only, is he the only seventh grade health teacher that teaches seventh grade, okay?
Yep, and then Dakota Evers will do the ninth grade starting next year.
And hopefully it'll be hers too, it'll be in her part.
Oh, yeah, she is, so right now, she's picking out the textbook curriculum, um, first aid, CPR, and then, so we're gonna work on purchasing that. And it, it's, you know, vetted, it's a good book, so.
She did that for seventh grade, she was the, but we, I don't, she also had the maternity leave for her baby, whatever. So she was also gone, so that didn't help at all, cuz Mrs. Nelson was like, I guess, kinda good at teaching that class. But it was a lot better when she was there teaching us compared to Mrs. Nelson. But yeah, we didn't go over any of that other type of stuff when I did that.
Over the years, society's changed so much, that back then, when the pencils and the erasers, that worked out well.
Yeah.
It doesn't work now, and society has changed, and we have to, we have to move along with the changing times, I guess, you know, you would put it.
And I think, you know, your comment about the Lincoln is really important, because you wanna get a little, you wanna scare those kids a little when they're in fifth, sixth grade. I know, I'm speaking for my grandchildren, I know my granddaughter would be scared if she heard about fentanyl, you know.
she heard about fentanyl, you know, at an early age. And that might stick in her head through high school.
It's definitely too nice. It's definitely too nice.
Right, it's too nice?
It could be like who taught you to, because I don't, Sarah, did you go through DARE? I had DARE when I was, this was a long time ago. But they showed us all the different kinds of drugs and times about overdoses, and they scared us when I was going through.
Yeah.
It was a little easier, I would say, for us.
It's like driver's training back in the day when I took it. The film they showed us in black and white scared the hell out of me.
I was just going to say that, and I think about it today. It was in this high school, Mr. Arson showed us this film that scared me, like, and I think about it still.
They showed victims, all the victims, all the blood and gore.
Lucy, Lucy does a great job with all that.
And I also think Lucy shows some of ours.
I also think about, like, the player department and the great tactics.
Do we have anything else?
No, I'm, I'm good. This has been a good discussion.
Well, thank you. Yeah, we can go on all night.
Thank you.
This is a good conversation.
Go on all night, yes.
I'm good. I agree.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Secora. Oh, all right, moving on to the younger crowd. I just want to say again, thank you, congrats to Rainey Wells as well, just to start off there, because she has been in our building for a long time and does a DCE program and phenomenal job. She makes huge shoes to fill. I mean, she's worked with all those kids and maintains so much class with those kids and gets them in so many different things. It's just wonderful. So she's really going to be missed, but other than that, some cool things we've had going on. Our fifth graders, when we came back from Christmas break, got to participate in Star Base program, which we did last year, and I reported to you guys on last year as well. So our two upstairs classes, Mrs. Collager and Mrs. Wigman's class, got to go the whole week down to Duluth to the Air Force Base, to that STEM program. They do admission to Mars, so they're looking at, you know, these kids go down and they talk about how everything we're working to Mars with robots, and they had some virtual reality for the kids and all sorts of stuff. Some opportunities that we don't necessarily have in our classrooms at the Lincoln, but they were able to do and get their hands on there. So the two classes went, the first four days we came back with a short week, but they condensed it for four days for those guys. And then the other four classes, so the whole fifth grade went the whole next week, all five days. So it was really a cool experience again. You had, you know, after we went last year, I had asked the teachers, do you guys want to go back? Kind of surveyed all of them, and they were like, yeah, we want to go back. This is a really cool opportunity, the kids love it. I mean, it's, it's a lot of work. Kudos to the teachers. I mean, we got 7:30, they're getting back at about 3:20, 3:30, you know, dragging some lunches along. INAC helps us out, we're packing stuff for kids that want to have it. Those kids bring their own lunches as well. You know, the bus companies helped us a lot, they're driving us down and back. So it's, so it's an undertaking, but for the kids, it was such a cool experience, so. And again, I'll talk to all the teachers again and see about pursuing it next year and keep, you know, have the opportunity to keep going with the fifth grade crew as they come up. But it's, it's a really neat experience and a lot of fun for them. Let's see, so we're just finishing up our second round of STAR testing. That's kind of our winter, our winter two weeks, where we test all the kids on STAR. It's just kind of a test to kind of see where they're at with their education for the year so far. We have a fall window, a winter window, a spring window where we have it required, and that's where we gauge our students' growth, achievements through the year, how they're doing. Teachers can do STAR testing whenever they want throughout the year with their kids, so they could test them every day if they wanted to, if they don't, but, I mean, they can use it, but we require these certain windows to give us some data to show our student growth, where we're at. Teachers, we had a PLC today where we had a lady from STAR, they're helping and training teachers on all the different reports they can run, giving them that data they can look at to see, you know, do they need to adjust some stuff with the curriculum? Am I missing a certain topic that we need to hit again? So it's very, it's a very nice test that we get to use, and it goes all the way up through 11th graders. So, so we do this from K all the way up through 11th grade. But the teachers get to use that, and it's very nice for them. So we had that training today. We do, we're at the end of second quarter, first semester's coming to an end. Like I said, so we're flipping over, so we're halfway through the school year. So we're moving on from there. At the Lincoln, we're in North Homes, we get a lot of mental health services through North Homes. We have two counselors that are in our building, and they're going to add another one three days a week, so we're going to have about two and a half now. So, so that's going to be nice because they're helping us service a lot of our students and take care of different things that are needed in our buildings, mental health-wise. So that's been a super nice service, and they work with us very well. We have monthly meetings where we get together with the North Homes people and myself, our school counselor, our check and connect that we have through the county, and just talk about kids, what are we needing, is there anyone we need to hit, stuff that we need to work on with them. So that, that's working out very well as well. Just to piggyback on some of the stuff from the high school, the swimming class this year, we brought it back. You guys filled the pool, helped us or allowed us to fill the pool, and spent a little money keeping that thing up and running, but it's been awesome. I mean, I've been in there, pop in and out of there whenever I can, and remember that, you know, there's swimming going on because it's, I gotta go through a locked door to get in there, but look, high school kids coming over and doing the lifeguarding has been awesome. Seeing kids those first couple of days, some scared to get in the water, standing in the shallow end, kickboards, can't even get across to the side, and I was in there the other day, and they're starting to wheel back and forth now and get it. I mean, what a cool opportunity for the kids to get that swimming going again that we haven't had for a lot of years. So all of our fifth and sixth graders are having, getting swimming. Again, thank you to you guys for spending a little money on having a pool. I know it's not super expensive to run, which is nice, but it's nice to have it there because these kids need that opportunity, I feel, and they're getting that now, so. And then, last thing, just for me, is just, you know, we're fortunate enough to have a pretty strong PTO now, so along with, you know, high school, they're doing a lot of cool things now, bringing in these fun nights. Our PTO has been doing it, has been doing it, but they really have kicked it up a notch this year too, or having the monthly, you know, fun nights, family fun nights. They had the huge Deck the Halls event, that was our teachers, kudos to them too in the classrooms, because they sure helped out a lot with that, but the PTO was the driving force behind it and put that together along with all the different fun opportunities that they're having and get to do. So I just wanted to give them a little props as well for all the hard work. We're fortunate to have it at the high school, they've got to kind of do it more on their own. We're lucky enough to have a strong parent crew that kind of steps up and helps along with some teachers that have really stepped forward this year too, so. That's about it from Lincoln for now. I'll take any questions, answer any of you guys want from me too, as well.
And I have to thank the PTO and all the teachers with the Deck the Halls, adding that extra hour for our senior population in our community. I heard that was really appreciated and well-attended.
There was a lot of people that showed up at first hour, it was really nice.
Yeah. So thank you to all of them.
Yes, yes.
Very good, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Any committee requests? Here none, we'll go to item 10, administrative business, or Al?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've made a motion to approve and accept donations.
Moved by Director Walters, put right Director Egan, any discussion?
I didn't get it.
The first is a $250 donation from Victoria Ingrid to support the East Strait Alliance. Next, a $3,500 donation from Detroit Diesel Re-Manufacturing to support the Beer Academy. Next, a $500 donation from Detroit Diesel to support ISC 7012, the school lunch debt. Next is $2,213 donation from multiple donors with Metachlist and a packet to support the Irving High School choir role purchase. Next is a $50 donation from Nicole Anderson to support the room of refirements. And finally, a $103,000 donation from the Owens Family Charitable Foundation to support the Chiva Field Reconstruction Project.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I'm very curious about the school lunch debt. I saw on social media that somebody started a GoFundMe to pay that off. Number one, I guess, is that an accurate number? And is that money coming to the school to pay that off?
Well, so we, we discussed this as a board, I think, prior.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 but it's good, I think it's good to say it again. So we discussed this as a board, I think, prior to coming onto the board, that this is not a school-sponsored event. I think there's some people in the community that see need and they'd like to help us, and we welcome that. I mean, we certainly wouldn't turn away any donations, but I want, I made it clear last time when I said it, and I want to make it clear again, that we do not need the community to fundraise to pay our lunch debt. We are doing just fine. So again, I would never turn away donations, so I make that clear to the community also, but we do not need help to pay our lunch debt.
This is something every district experiences.
It is.
It's a very large sum of money. I think one district had like hundreds of thousands of dollars that they carried over from year to year, and at some point, you just kind of, like any other business, you erase your bad debt. So that's kind of what's happened here. I know in the past, we kind of?
They don't allow us to erase the bad debt, they allow us to carry the debt. And so the debt that we're carrying is probably around 60, 70,000, that's probably a pretty accurate number, but that's really going back years. I think we average probably between 10 and 15,000 dollars a year in uncollected school lunch bills. The interesting thing is, you know, the legislature, again, comes through with this free meals. My, my ask was, will you also let us waive the debt? So we don't have to carry that on our books if you're going to waive the free meals.
I thought a hundred years ago, maybe, we kind of just, it went away.
Well, according to the Otters, I don't know that it does go away, right?
They probably, it probably did go away, but you have to use general fund dollars to, right, to pay for it.
Yeah, it was paid off.
So, you know, seven, eight years ago, they probably did.
It just wasn't, there was no sense of trying to collect, and it wasn't turned into a collection agency.
Paid it off.
Came off the books.
And now some of this debt is from families that have long since graduated out of the system, so.
But regardless of how you said we don't need help with that, and it's, you know, we can't carry that debt, because this donation said it was specific to the lunch debt, it will go to that?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely. Thank you. Any other discussion?
We have a list of choir role donations, and when I was looking at that, it just kind of resonated with me over the course of this academic year and, you know, this summer. I just feel like we should really be proud of the music programs in our schools. Whether it's at an athletic event or one of the performances here, I just feel like they've really been getting out there in the community, stepped it up, and it's just, we really should be proud of our music programs. So thank you to everybody that makes it possible.
If I just have a good comment for that, you know, well, I've been playing these G B hockey games, it's only going to some place. Parents are there complaining because the band is not there. And my argument to that is, well, when you have band concerts, the hockey players go to band concerts? Should we be requiring, if a band's coming to your hockey game, we should always be requiring that you're there to support the band as well. It just doesn't go one way.
I think some coaches really encourage that.
Encourage what?
Encourage, they don't require, they can't require it, right? But I think some coaches do, and all our coaches should be encouraging that.
Strongly recommend it.
Strongly recommend it, yes.
More that issue than ever. At the football, I think, and there was not enough people. Is in band now, right? Well, I think Mr. Berg is, you know, trying very hard. I mean, COVID was tough on music programs, and I think he's trying really hard to build his numbers back, but now you look at, you know, he said 50, roughly 50 kids. If he was to pick four hockey games that he's going to play at, he's probably going to get 40 excuses from, you know, 40 of the 50 kids why they can't make it on this night. And with him, where he has an issue, like you said, if my tuba doesn't show up, it's pretty tough to play, you know, the sportsmanship song. So I think he really struggles with that, but he's working very hard to build that program back. And, you know, we, we struggle with the commitment. I mean, I, I hear a lot about marching band. But, but boy, to, to make that commitment that you're going to drive in if you say your family's staying at the lake for the summer or whatever, to commit every day to commit to marching band, that's a huge commitment. And there's not many kids that make that anymore. That shows you how much the public really appreciates that. Oh, absolutely. Which is a good thing. A source of pride. Yeah.
And then when you're talking about pep band, and we only have 50 people concert bands, right?
You're spread thin.
And athletic events generally happen on the same night, some away, some here. So how many of those 50 are athletes participating in other events?
It's basically what they would commit, you know, just say the band is going to be playing, you know, at such and such a game. And make these, you know, I don't want to say the athletes, athletes, but it should be a two-way street.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, if you've got athletes that are on, let's just say, the girls' basketball team, and they're down in Duluth playing on the same night that the, that the hockey team is here, and, you know? And say, say the girls' basketball players are on the pep band. Yeah. Then they can't go to the hockey game or whatever. Exactly. It's, it's a few kids that are in every? I think it's the numbers. I think we really need to work on building those band numbers.
It just, it just, because I just asked, I was just interested in it, but, so they do play, they have recorded band music that they play at our games.
I know.
Right? And I was curious, what year that was recorded? Well, that was when our band was well over 100 students and recorded almost 15 years ago. So that's, I don't know that Mr. Berg could even record some of those to play and do it with enough quality that, so I, it's just, we're in a different spot with music, but I hope it's, it's building back and getting better, so.
In the ideal world, you'd have a separate pep band, or it would just be dedicated to just point to sports.
Right.
You know? But we don't have enough kids?
Right.
That's the bottom line.
Right.
Very well.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.
Item B is a motion to approve payment number eight to Max Grade Construction in the amount of $20,840.15 for work completed on the Lincoln and rehabbed long-term facility project.
So? Moved by Director Malathan, supported by Director Duarte, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.
Item C is a motion to approve payment to the Range Association of Municipalities and Schools for 2,023 membership in the amount of $1,750.
Chair, I'll make a motion.
Well, go ahead.
Supported by Director Duarte, any discussion?
I thought we were going to discuss this.
Yeah, so, so I had sent, sometime between our last meeting and tonight, I had sent you off some information. I sent a letter from the interim director, Steve Georgie, about some of the benefits of Rams. I included in your mailboxes, and I think I also sent this in email, just a flyer that lists all the members, and this is a flyer that hadn't been updated, so that I included some of the missing members that are on there. So they do have 67 public sector due paying members. So of that 67 public sector due paying members, there are 24 seats on the board. So I know, you know, one of the, one discussion or conversation that we had, maybe, everybody should have a vote on Rams. I did share that with Mr. Georgie, and I am going to bring that up again. We have a meeting next Thursday night, I'm going to bring that topic up again. I don't know if it's going to be met with a lot of favor because the herding cats mentality of 67 voting members is maybe a little bit much.[1681.04] is maybe a little bit much. Twenty-four is a lot. But I know that was a concern of the board. And again, I just, I wanna reiterate, and maybe I didn't say this clearly enough or didn't make it evident enough, but I am a voting member on the Rams board. The Hibbing District definitely has a voice. If there's anything that you would like me to bring forward, or anything you'd like me to discuss, I'll do that. So I know that we, we had a candidate, Mr. Poulter wasn't elected, but we do have membership on that board. And they, they're a powerful voice. I think I, I shared with you in email that they're, they're a powerful voice that when they walk into the room with the local legislators, they pay attention to Rams. And I think, I think it's in, it's in our best interest to continue.
And I talked with Director Georgie yesterday in his office. He said how many thousands you see the school districts through lobbying and stuff like that. And he said he'd be glad to attend a meeting, but Rick had a lot of that in the emails he sent to us. So it's well worth the money.
I, I do, I mean, I do wanna talk about how the election happened. And I think even interim director Georgie questioned that process. And they wondered why Hibbing didn't show up to vote. Well, we, we were gonna attend. We were supposed to attend the meeting. We canceled school that day. And I had a conversation that, that morning with Director Berklich and Director Poulter. And we thought, maybe, what kind of message does it send? That we canceled school, right? But we, we had to a party in terrible weather. So we just chose not to attend. And I think if we had known, I, I had thought that maybe they would postpone the vote, or maybe they would cancel the event, is the way it looked that day, but it didn't happen.
I explained that to the service club yesterday to them. I said, they understand, but we're still representing.
Last year, we were able to vote in multiple, not for this election, but for previous election.
Because of COVID.
Different circumstances, yeah. Well, you can, Rick will bring us back to the board, see how that goes.
Yes.
And I just wanna reiterate, Rick is a wonderful voice and representation on the Rams board, both for our school and for the superintendent's group. Because I've sat on that board for six years with other superintendents, and he really does a nice job.
And I'm over there three or four times a month, so I get great contact. His office is ready to crash from the boardroom. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carried. Right. One, no.
Item D is a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-two pay equity compliance report as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Director McLaughlin, supported by Director Nyberg. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.
Item E is a second reading of policy number seven thirteen, bus accident. Item F is a second reading of policy number seven fourteen, fund balances. Item G is a second reading of policy number seven fifteen, student activity accounting. And item H is a second reading of policy number seven seventeen, uniform brand guidance policy regarding federal revenue sources.
Thank you. Move to item eleven. Any discussion? Superintendent Rick has.
I think, I think Director McLaughlin had something.
I was just gonna ask, do we have to do anything with our newspaper resolution?
Yep, that's where.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so at the last meeting, there was a number of items that the board wanted some additional information on. And I believe through emails to the board, I think I addressed each of those. But I, there's, there's some, I think, that, that need discussion tonight. But one, one question was about sound quality in the boardroom. I just want you to know that's still a work in progress. I'm ninety-nine percent sure that we can make these mics pick up our sound. It's not, they're, it's currently not set that way. It's set up for a Zoom meeting to connect with the mics, but it seems like it's a fairly simple switch. But the company that we contracted with is from the cities. Mr. Anderson has been on vacation for a few days, and, but he, he did send in the request. It looks like that can happen, so it will be coming soon, that these mics will be live. And just a reminder to the board, when, when they're live, they're live all the time. So if for some reason you wanted to mute yourself, you have to hold the little button, and then the, the green light goes out. So it'll pick up rustling of paper, it'll pick up side conversations, it'll pick up yawns, or whatever might be happening. So you just, you gotta be aware, if we do go live with the mics, they're, they're live all the time. So that, that's one that's in the works.
Can we talk about sound in the gym? Can you talk about sound in here? I totally, when Sarah brought that up, it is hard to hear in here, even if you're sitting at the table. But in the gym, when we have assemblies and have all one thousand plus kids and a hundred teachers, if someone's trying to present or do a pep fest, it is so hard to hear. We need to ramp that up and beef it up.
I think that's already in the works to be upgraded.
Is it really?
So I talked to Mr. Anderson. That was on a list that we had from earlier this school year. So I think it's coming. I don't know if it's a summer project or what, but it's coming.
Okay.
Just to follow up to my understanding, talking with Mr. Workeloff, and he thinks we can also tie that into the camera, so they'll be able to pick it up. And we can also tie it into the speakers above, which would help those sitting back there here. What's going on up here?
So I, I talked with Ron too. And what he thinks is that would be the best solution is he thinks that there's an antenna that they can plug into that podium, that'll hook to a mic that they have on the camera here, that'll pick up our sound from the table. That, I think, is a bigger project, but that's in the, in the works too, to see if that's a possibility. So I just wanted to update you quick on, on that sound. Let's see. Oh, there were some questions about Mr. Turner. He was gonna give us some information on co-ops. I believe he sent that to you today, some numbers on co-ops. The trainer, I, I talked to him about the trainer conversation that you wanna have.
You mean the, with the different healthcare, yeah?
Yes. And I think he's still working on that, but that's on his list. He's gonna be here on February eighth, so he, he will definitely be prepared on February eighth.
He said he'd have some coming out on Thursday, too.
Oh, yes, yes.
This week. Deep email.
Yep. The AED training, he's working with the fire department to get all of our coaches and staff an update on, on AEDs. And I know Director Nyberg had said that there was a coach that we hired after. We, everybody did receive training on, on the use of AEDs. It was part of our back-to-school trainings. But if we hired somebody, say in October, they would have missed that piece. So we're gonna not only do a catch-up on, on all the people that we missed, but we're also gonna do a refresher for everybody in the fire department's gonna put that on for us. Mr. Turner, have more information about that?
Yeah, that's what I, that was my comment I wanted to make on the discussion items, is that I was contacted right after our last meeting by a volleyball coach, saying they didn't know where the AEDs were, and she had been trained. So I just wanted to make sure we get that done.
And she was a hire that happened after that. So that's, now we've put a, a safe connect in place, so that doesn't happen.
Okay. I thought she was speaking for all the volleyball coaches, but maybe not.
And so, so would that be like a refresher training that we do every year?
It is. It's part of our annual trainings. It's in, every fall, all staff members get that, so.
And not, but coaches is a little different.
No, but we include them. We include them to, if they have a school email, they get the training. Everybody with a school email gets it.
Should remember that.
But they may not. Have a school email.
They, if they're a coach on, on staff, they have a school email.
They do, that they use and look at.
Well, they, they're supposed to, yes.
Do we track it?
We should do that, too.
Do we track it? So if they're a coach, if they're a head coach, that they have to attend that before, before they start their season with those athletes.
Yes, yes.
So if you signed up and in the pile.
Remember, you certainly sort of apply, you have to apply for license to be a coach. It requires that you have a license.
They have what, AED?
But that's when you apply to be a coach, right? So you do that one time, but you won't, you apply to be.
Every year.
Every year you have to have that training as a coach.
Right, okay, yeah, good.
But I don't know if that, do all our coaches have that?
They better, or they shouldn't have been hired.
Oh. Well, that's, I don't know, something to check, I guess. But the fact that she didn't even know where the AED was, I'm like, it was a little disturbing.
Well, and there, you know, we've got a lot going on in our hallways. But if you take a step back and look, there's signage above all the AEDs that show where they're at. They're, they're well marked.
Yep.
It's in a white box that stands out on a gray wall, and, you know.
And she knew there would be directions. She goes, hopefully I would be able to follow the directions.
And it's a, you open it up, and it just talks you through what you need to do. So it's not like you have to know how to use it.
But being prepared is always better.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, pro active.
Are those inspected over here?
They are.
Yes.
The batteries are inspected. They're, the, the pads have to be, they expire every year, so they, yep.
Okay, who inspects them? Like, our safety?
Uh, I think it's Tyler.
Tyler's the one.
They come in and do it. And so I talked, after the last board meeting, I talked to Deanne. I went around, I took pictures of every single AED in the building. They're on every floor. I sent it out to staff. I sent it to you guys on the.
I didn't see that. Oh, I don't, I don't use my schooling.
Well, see, that's a problem.
It is.
And, and then I sent a little clip of how to use it, because they had it on the CBS Sunday. It's, it was like a clip of a minute and twenty-one seconds to show exactly how you use it. So all the staff, Paris, everyone got that, too, so.
Do we have like four of them in the next school, or?
Oh, way more than four. They're, they're on every floor. They're by the auditorium, by the athletic wing. Yes.
Fantastic.
Another item that I just wanted to talk about is a paper. We, we gave, by resolution, made the Masabi Tribune our paper for thirty days at our last meeting. So that's gonna be expiring here on February fourth, I believe. So I did send you information, both from, from Hometown Focus and the Masabi Tribune. I did ask the questions about coverage. And I got a reply yesterday from Marie Tolanen at the Masabi Tribune that said that she is now gonna be covering our board meetings, and she needed access to our onboard system so she could see minutes. So there is coverage coming from, on our board meetings. The rates between the two, I mean, I'm sure you got a chance to look at it. They're real similar. It's, it's not much a difference, not much of a difference in price between the two. So I, I need some direction from you, how you would like to move forward. And then we should do that through a resolution, and it should happen at the next meeting. So we'll still be under that thirty-day window to get the minutes of this meeting in, but then the minutes of the next meeting, what we need to address, who our official paper is.
We'll see if the person shows up at the next meeting, too.
Well, she, she said she, I spoke to her on the phone. Marie is a great lady. Marie's, she'll do.
She did the Chisholm school boards, and the pictures, and the paper and everything. We're only seven miles away.
Yep. But she, she is, she's a dedicated person. She takes her job seriously. She'll do a good job for us. She asked, she looked at the agenda, and she said that she had a conflict. She said, it doesn't seem like there's anything too controversial on your agenda tonight. And I said, Marie, we want coverage whether it's controversial, but just, you know. And she said, well, I'll watch your minutes, and we'll write something up, and I'll probably ask you for some input on the article. So she'll do a good job for us. I'm sure she will.
So put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
That'd be the question. Is, is it Masabi? Is it Hometown Focus? Because I would need to, we would need to pick one in that resolution.
I would like to take a look at what their circulation is, as far as the Tribune versus Hometown Focus. I think one has more coverage in Hibbing than the other.
Now, we did this last time we had that conversation. So I have that somewhere. If you'd like me to send it to you.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Could they break down Hometown Focus to Hibbing area? Because that's a, that's a, I think that's a very regional, that covers entire area.
I think to be honest, to me, the Tribune would start with the time of Hibbing Tribune or whatever. We don't get the coverage like the other, Virginia's and the other ones have. I think we have less coverage here, and what's going on. And now we gotta fight for them to come, pay them to come to our school board meeting.
We don't get any coverage.
Wait, we don't, what do you mean, we have to pay them to come to our school?
We gotta, we gotta.
If we did, you go and.
What?
If we take them as their newspaper, well, then you should come here. We're paying to get the newspaper.
Because we're paying more?
I think Ms. Tolanen will come cover our meetings, whether they're the official paper or not, after talking to her today. That wasn't like, what, or, you know, an and or.
So you just got her to say she'd start covering?
Well, so I had, I had asked the question. We'd asked the question both to Hometown Focus. I called the Hometown Focus, and he said, if there's truly something big happening, you know, please let us know that they don't have the staff that can come to every Sunday before the evening and right in the, he said you could submit stories or anything.
I just don't like being told, oh, if you got a controversy, we'll come cover it. And we want someone that's gonna cover the positive things that we've done here, what the school has done, what the staff has done, not because we have an incident that needs to be covered.
Yeah, but they gotta sell papers.
I understand they have to sell papers, but.
But we need all the theories.
I don't, I don't know if anybody looked at the, checked this person roster for the last month. It was in our packet. I mean, we spent almost ten, we spent over ten thousand dollars with the Masabi Tribune in a month.
Well, we looked even deeper. And I think it's, was it thirty thousand?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight to date in this school year.
No, that was fiscal twenty-two.
Oh, that was last year. Yeah, okay, okay.
I was gonna ask that.
Yeah, so that surprised me.
For the school year?
Excuse me?
For the school year.
Yeah. And that really surprised me. But what they did do is.
Twenty-five hundred books a month.
The minutes are in there. There's, there's a number of job postings that are in there. Because of, you know, like if we, if we post a teaching job, there's, there's venues to post that where teachers that are looking for jobs go and check that out, like EdPost or other college sites or things. But if you're posting for a plumber or an electrician, there is no, you know, other than going to the Minnesota workforce, there's no site. So we need those in the paper. So we look back. And we had many custodial openings. We had, we hired an electrician, we hired a plumber. I mean, there's, we had quite a few postings. And then we also did, I, I had worked on some, remember I bought those front page ads for the Mannys? We had a few, and we did a few stories for the Mannys. Well, with that, then they, they run our logo on the TV guide, and they run it once a week in the paper. So we're gonna go for that weekly, even though I really bought the, the front page ads. We don't get an ad or a bill for the front page ad. They're billing us for those reruns, which... So I mean, it's some things that we chose to do, but yeah, it's a thirty-eight thousand. That's a big expense that we put into the paper.
Hometown Focus is locally owned. I mean, if you consider this area, it's locally owned. The Masabi Tribune isn't anymore.
After the last meeting, I collected the papers. We get it. But I never really paid much attention. And really, I noticed that there wasn't a whole lot even about our, our athletics. But, and there were stories in there about other local districts. But as I asked you in the email, my question also was kind of playing devil's advocate there is, is there anybody dedicated to send this, the newspaper, the positives, the stories, the clippings, the pictures that we would want in the paper? Because if they don't know, how are they gonna put it in? So, I mean, are we currently sending that?
If they get to our meetings, they know what we're doing here. So why should I have to send it to them?
But we, but we don't talk about all that here.
But we would send it.
But we do.
It would help, it would help.
We do. And we, we don't, we don't have a dedicated point person that just does media. We don't have that. But all of our principals, all of our staff, if they have something exciting happening, they reach out and they send it out. Do, do they come cover us all the time? No.
So there's definitely a lack of coverage, for sure.
And I, again, I'm gonna go back when, when Kelly Rinsider was our reporter. She was at the meetings. She engaged with the board. She engaged with the superintendent, the people that were here. And she talked to them and learned more about what was going on than just was talked about at the board meeting.
Well, we had a Hibbing presence there, and Virginia, when all, they moved over that way, so we, yeah.
And if we, if we didn't have Barry Jim Betty as a local sports article, we would have no articles.
That's right. And I, I have to make the comment. I found out about sports articles. If our coaches, after the game is done, don't call the Tribune, the Tribune doesn't put anything in. So that's, that's on our coaches. And I don't think all our coaches are calling in.
Well, and you see, like, some of the article, like the swimming articles, like you can see the swimming coaching staff. They, they put effort in and, and write something, right?
Right.
But I also think that Mr. Jim Betty, who works at our swimming, so he maybe covers those a little bit better than he would cover a soccer game or something.
Yeah, but also, you know, if we, we need to have our coaches call in, because I don't care if they're losing every game. They still gotta call in, so people know what's going on. Don't you agree, Mr. Jim?
Oh, I agree that I think the coaches have to require it. They just have to call in. Either call Mr. Jim Betty, or they call the Tribune.
But some, they're not calling in all the time.
No, they're not.
I know they're not.
You know, for me, it's more about, I mean, it's, there's more than just athletics. And I'm glad Sarah did that, because I actually wanted to go back and look at just the front page and all the stories, you know? And, and I think about the one other large school district in our area, and it was a big thing on collecting clothing, right?
Yeah.
We've had the rule requirements here for how many years? And.
I haven't seen an article. There you go.
Right.
Yeah, Chisholm gets a full page in a paper.
But someone said they had an agreement with the, something, the Tribune. Can you get a student?
You can't let the audience talk right now. I'm sorry. You have to sign up. Even though it's a small crowd, you gotta be equal with everybody. So, sorry.
Yeah, I don't kind of, they got an agreement. Why don't we?
They want some kind of agreement, don't they? When, when someone's purchased at the Tribune, they sold the free press or something. They got an agreement, there would be a separate date. Do you know what that, right? There's something.
No, but I wouldn't doubt that, because the, the former board.
It's the Beeta Paneez card. Had that magic over there.
Yeah. I did, I just, the other thing I wanted you to know is that the what's up jackets that we, somebody named Director McLaughlin asked, could we take that and submit it? And I did talk to that advisor. They will do that, both for the Hometown Focus and the Masabi Tribune, when they put that out online. So we'll see what we get from that. But, no, I, you know, as far as where the minutes go, our requirement is that we put them in a local newspaper. It doesn't have to be the Tribune. It could be the Hometown Focus, but.
Yeah, that's the only legal.
Correct. And then the story piece is a whole nother animal, but. And then the story piece is a whole nother animal, but.
Is that the major cost, 2,500 a month? Is that mainly minutes?
No, minutes are really cheap, like $150 a meeting or something.
Oh, so it's the job ads?
It's ads, it's, yeah, it's the extra stuff.
We've always used bids.
Oh, yeah, okay.
All the election information, I mean, we didn't, I didn't even think about that. All the advertising we had to do about the election, that all, it's expensive.
Why couldn't we just put the minutes in that one and then use Hometown for other stuff?
Well, I think, I mean, we could make, we could make both our official newspaper and designate one to be where the minutes go.
Because the minutes are that dream. It's something to think. With the rise in social media, and we have our own website, we have everything that, I mean, how many people actually read the paper these, I mean, that's sort of because I'm old.
We read it every day. I think it's more reading.
We have to say requirements that we have to put our minutes in a newspaper.
We do, yes. It has to be local.
That's paper, or could it be online?
Okay.
Can it be online?
No.
Has to be a paper.
It's a news, newspaper.
Says newspaper, official newspaper.
And we couldn't choose the Star Tribune. It has to be a local.
Local.
I'd be curious what the leadership is of the, or of the Masabi Tribune. I mean, just because their subscriptions have gone up astronomically.
I had all that last time we talked. I'll find that because I had it last time we talked about this.
It's just a very cumbersome field.
Yeah, but you could do that. Give them the minutes and Hometown is great. Now, there's no reason why we can't designate both, both of them as. And we'll just handpick which one is.
I do think our resolution needs to specifically say who is gonna be posting our minutes. We'll have to say that.
Yeah, we could, of course, their minutes. Then we can use Hometown. Whatever you like.
Okay, that's all. Bring it back to the next meeting then.
Will you send us an email on the readership?
I will. I'll try to find that. We had a circulation number when we had this conversation last year, so I will find that again. If not, okay.
But I bet it's changed since last year.
And give it, at Virginia matches on what it is, and give it.
Sure.
Same with Hometown. We should be able to tell you on the, they were saying stupid, super one and all different.
Sure. So, can we defer our vote or our resolution or postpone it for another meeting until we get that?
I think it had, I think since we didn't have it on the agenda, it's gonna have to be on the February 8th. And, yeah.
Maybe we'll be there for that.
I have one other item or one other to-do list from the last meeting. We were gonna talk about board packets being available online, the full board packet being available online. And I'd sent you some information about, you know, what we could potentially do and what we have to do. And I got a mixed bag of responses, individual responses. Some said, "Keep it the way it is." Some said, "Change it." So, I think we need to have a discussion as a board. And you give me some direction on where you'd like to go. It's a very, it's a very simple ad to put the full packet online without that purchase of that premier that I had talked to you about. We could purchase the premier. It would probably be a simpler process for Trina when she works through it. But she can also just scan that, all the information, and just add it as a PDF or upload it into the, into the program. So, it's very easy to do. I've already got her blessing that she's good with doing it. So, that's 90% of the battle right there. So, it's whatever direction the board would like to go.
I mean, I was thinking about this and I think that we should leave it as is. I think giving the public our agenda should be enough. I just think we get into kind of a scary area if we're giving them all this information. They could, are they, are they interpreting it properly? What if they interpret it wrong and then they start a rumor? Or, you know what I mean?
That's when the conversation can start. And that's, is that what we want? Because if they do interpret it wrong or have a question, I mean, we don't, we want them to come to us to ask, to get that clarification. And because all the information is public data, there isn't anything private on there.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I kinda go both ways, but I don't know.
And the reason why I brought that up is at least then it's an option. You know, we're giving the community members the option to look at it. You know, somebody made the comment of, "Nobody's gonna look at it anyway." Maybe they won't, but at least it's there in case they, they want to or have, want that additional background information.
But I do really have a concern about the interpretation of individual people based on their political sway and on their preconceived opinions about things. And I think it could really get hairy.
But on the one hand, exotic people are coming, they'll, but on the other hand, if you give them all that information, they wouldn't have to come here to come and listen. So.
If they understand it and don't have questions.
You know what? And I'm all for this, this public knowing. And I'm happy we have everything posted. I'm happy we have our agendas. But I'm a little bit concerned about the way social media is and has gotten out of control. That it's one thing if they read the documents and call the school and inquire. But the majority of people aren't gonna do that. They're all gonna sit back and they're gonna start posting all kinds of stuff. And I'm just concerned about the negative goodwill and advertising that's gonna create in our school. That's, that's my only concern, not just posting.
The concern is, oh, yeah.
Yes.
I don't know what, who negative could come out of the public if you had it all. I don't, can you give an example of what might be in here that would be negative?
Yes, I can.
That'd be great.
So, all of our hires, we put together a recommendation to hire.
Yes.
Public information, right? I mean, I would just, I can't imagine what social media could do because somebody is gonna find something wrong with one of our hires and what we post. Somebody may pick something out of here and all of a sudden, in a heartbeat, we're gonna have 500 comments on Facebook, potentially degradating somebody's character and integrity. And they may see it, they may see it in the agenda, they know we're hiring this person. But when they start reading some of it, I'm just afraid our context, it may lead to places outside that we don't need to go.
There's a fine line there between data privacy and what the board can have and what the public can have, too. So, it's, I don't know who would make that call.
Well, I would never put anything in the packet that would, I'd never put anything private in the packet. So, we don't do that currently. And I just, you know, looked around us and it's probably about half and half. I mean, there's districts in our area that, most use something that's called Board Book. We use something that's called Onboard. But, so, most have Board Book and they have an app, a link to it. Some don't. So, it's just kind of a mix. And like I told you with an email, MSBA, it said, "There's no requirement." And it's just all over the board in the state how people do things. So, this, no matter what we do, this has to always stay, I found that out. And we always have to post all of our materials in a bulletin board in the board.
The board, do people, do people come and look at that?
We've had, we've had people that have attended our meetings that have looked. I've never seen anybody else that has looked at that.
I would prefer it the way it is, only because one, it's there and somebody has a question on what's going on, has a question about an hire or that. Then comes the podium, we got time, we got five minutes, they're gonna ask questions. As far as social media, you can get on social media, you can show whatever you want and not take credit, or not take credit for, but not take responsibility for it. And all of a sudden, the next other, there's 300 different opinions on what's going on. And I just, I just feel it'd be safer for not only the people that were hired, but for the people that actually sit on this board, that if somebody has a question, come, come look at me face-to-face, ask me what it is. I don't know what, you know, what the question is, and I'll answer. But don't go on here and.
Well, it strictly goes to people that we're hiring, just eliminate that.
I'm not saying the people that we, I'm saying anything that we do inside this room, they can either have the opportunity to watch it on TV, they can have an opportunity to come talk to us as a helping form. And why should we have to put everything on?
Now, what about this? What's, here's another example. What we did where we got a raise, basically, at our last meeting. Now, we increased what we are paid for this type of repay per month. If that was on social media, you don't think that could cause a big, huge discussion? And so, a lot of negativity?
They can hear it either way if they.
Well, right, it's open. It's public information.
But I guess I'm not, if they have questions or if they're upset about it, I guess I'm not a board member who's afraid to have that conversation.
But online? Do you want that online? A big negative, big negative conversation?
I probably won't engage in the negative conversation online.
Well, but someone might. You know what I mean? They don't deserve it, especially this person doesn't deserve it.
But that doesn't personally bother me if somebody says that. And I won't engage in it.
I don't think it's positive for the district. I really don't.
How, find it, give it the way it is.
I don't know.
Well, put it on the next panel, or put it up for a board.
I'm fine with this, too.
So, why?
And I agree with Mike. Come to the meeting and ask us. We'll tell you anything.
And I would agree with that. But we now have them at 4:30, which is still not enough, late enough for most people to come. And that was another reason to put this on here because people still can't attend for working people. So, there's always a way for them to.
Well, they can watch the meeting.
You got the hospital shifts, people work shifts, too, you sort of.
And maybe one solution is if somebody really sees something on our agenda and is genuinely concerned and interested, I mean, I believe between Trina and Superintendent Aldrich, all of us are transparent. And if we know that there's gonna be a topic that somebody is working till 5:30, maybe on that particular night, we can move the public forum until the end, to the end of the meeting.
You can also cut back on what we put on, if a board member has a comment with what's on the agenda, instead of putting all that kind of stuff, summarize it or something, or just leave it the way it is to me, too. So, it's not controversial, we're not. The other problem I see with it, John, is that we have, if we have something, we talk about negativity stories, you know, we have a disciplined teacher. I mean, that's closed session anyways, but you can't really discuss that with the public. So, we're not gonna let, let the information get out.
No.
No. You know, so.
But we do a lot of other things that.
I understand that, but I'm just saying.
Say we get a fentanyl speaker.
I'm using that as a.
There are parents that maybe don't want their kids to do that. And then that's gonna go on social media and then it's gonna blow up. We talk about so many things here that could blow up.
Absolutely. But again, we're, the, it's already available on H-PAC that can be on social media. So, I don't see the difference.
Say that again?
What's available on H-PAC?
What's available on H-PAC?
Our, the viewing of our board meetings.
Yeah, but not the stuff.
But not the background.
No. But they're saying, you're saying what we're talking about is gonna get on social media. It can already get out on social media.
Okay.
But I think when they hear it, that's one thing. When they read it, I think people can tape things, I mean, when you say something.
It's another question.
It's all taped. Whatever we're saying is taped and it is what it is. But if somebody takes something out of our packet and without hearing conversation and takes it out of context, I mean, there's a difference between public information and public, published information. And I'm afraid that published information out of context could just create a lot of negative publicity for the district.
Do we need a motion? Are we looking to do a motion?
Well, I think we're discussing. I mean, I can, I can put it on next month's agenda or next, next week's agenda.
Here's the question would be that we get the backups to inform us to make the decision. Now, is that public knowledge, too? Along with, once, then that's how we make our agenda.
Well, according to Gary Lee from MSBA, because they asked that question, once, once Trina, so the background, the backup information is not public until she pushes the button and sends it to you.
Yeah, then it's public.
Then it becomes public.
So, then, I believe that's a record of warranty. So, you will then, that, the public should have access to that. They don't know that's out there.
Correct.
Yeah, and part of, part of me agrees with that, John. I do think this is gonna be a can of worms, though. I'm just gonna say that.
We should be asking the questions ahead of time to Rick it so we don't get anything like that, any background. Say, you called up and asked him for some background information. I don't know what you asked him, so it's not public to the board. So, like we did in the past, we never used to get that. And then the board members wanted more information to, I said, "Don't have to do that. Go through protocol, call the principal, call the superintendent, then you'll call the board."
But it's so much easier, I would think, this way.
Yes, but easier has got nothing to do with it. Look at the.
But it's gonna make it more difficult for us to do business and it's gonna make it more difficult for administrators. And then, and then, now we get our packet so we can all read it. And we're all seeing the same thing and hearing the same thing and it's just gonna.
But that's public knowledge and then that's gotta go off.
Yeah.
So, there you, you can have both.
You can have both, yeah.
It has to be posted. It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be put.
Right.
It has to be posted.
That's what we get, yeah. We don't have to send, we have to record your warranty signature. Well, is that, is that online then?
The backup?
Yeah.
No. That's all.
That's only available right here.
Well, so, so, no, it's, it's a little bit more complex than that. Like, for instance, Ms. Tolanen, right? She called today. It is public information. So, if I, if I live in the community and I would like to see the backup, the same time that you get it, I could call Trina and say, "Please add me to the list. I'd like to get the board packet with backup." So, when she hits the button and it goes up to the board, it would go up to anybody else that made that request. That statute, that's, we have to allow that. So, we have, WDIO gets our packet. They call once a year, they say, "We'd like to have all your board information, including the backup information." She, they're included in that. We have, I know we have a former community member that lives in Arizona that gets our backup information when Trina hits the button and sends it out to the board because they requested it.
Does that go on the website?
It does not go on the website.
Then how do people, oh, it's out there?
They would get a link, just like you do, to see the information. Like, just how you can see it on board, the public.
Well, so they're, are you saying that any citizen of Hiving or whatever can request, say by email, to get the backup?
They would just call Trina and say, "I would like to be on the list to receive board packets with backup."
Well, would that satisfy you then, if any public, anyone out there can request?
I think it's just easier to put it with the agenda, it's a...
And just like have everyone out there have it?
Quick hit of the link, just like the agenda and have it. I still think not all, everybody will know that they can get it by calling or emailing.
Well, everyone who gets it, when you said, that's everybody who means it, or who wants to look at it.
If they've called and requested, yes.
Okay.
I can tell you, I got emails thanking for bringing this up, so there are people who want this information.
May I ask, how many emails?
Reply, here's the website for the...
So not a lot, okay, still somebody.
Well, for now, you could give them Trina's number and they could get on the list.
Yeah, they could.
They could, yeah.
Get that again, Henry.
If it's only two, yeah.
Get that website from Trina and they could be added too.
At that point, they need a username and password for that?
I'd have to work out the specifics, but I know that, I mean...
So again, that just eliminates it.
She might just scan it and send it to them, if that's, and she might do that with some others already, so...
I mean, if we're willing to do it one way, I don't understand why we're not willing to do the other, but that's just...
Well, clarify, I'm not willing to do it, I'm just asking a question. If you want to send it to them so two people could call Trina and get that information, I don't think it should be made public.
Well, then, that's public.
But it's already public.
Yeah, so...
This is public.
We would have to deny ourselves that information.
No, it is public, you're saying you don't feel like you should publish it.
Correct.
But we have it, it goes out to all of us, it's gonna go to whoever wants it.
I think maybe this needs to be put to a vote on the board, I don't know.
Yeah, but we can't do anything, it's illegal, so we just like...
I mean, not tonight, but at some point, I wonder...
Yes, I said, next time, yeah, because we have, have, well, we can still go as we are right now, but until...
We are legally in compliance, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So legally in compliance now, we bring it to a board at the next meeting, for or against it? And just right now, it sounds like it's 5-1, we got a couple of weeks.
Well, I kinda have gone back and forth though, in my mind.
That's what I said, we got a couple of weeks.
Yeah, we can, we can ruminate it a little longer.
We can think about it too.
Yeah.
Well, if you're, if you're directing me to include that on the next meeting, then maybe I just suggest, just go back and reread that email I sent that gave a little background information, and if you've got other questions between now and then, I'll find you the answer or something. I, I, I hope, I hope that was all the items that you had for me, I think I missed something.
You're not missing me any of it.
Okay.
You're all done.
Okay.
Mr. Foulcheck?
Want you to adjourn?
Without objection, meetings adjourned, it's 6:40 and thank you all for coming and see you in two weeks.